Good morning, everyone. This is a meeting of the South Kingston Technical Review Committee. The date is, I'm about to tell you it's Wednesday, February 12th because I'm looking at the minutes and not the agenda from last time. It is actually March 11th. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes from February 12th, 2020. I have actually a quick correction to it, which is that on the list of members present, other attendees, Rich Bourbonet is listed as an other attendee. He is actually a voting member of the committee, so we'll switch that. Does others have other comments, corrections in the meeting summary from our last gathering? I have a motion from John. Do we have a second? Probably look into you, Mr. Bourbonet. Second on the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to add something in here, which we don't usually do. I'm going to add in roll call, largely because we have a member who is not present. We also have a lot of new faces in the room, and I'm not sure that everyone sort of knows who is at the table. So, we would, not going to necessarily call it a formal roll call, but I will have everybody just sort of quickly say who's present around the table for everyone's knowledge and just let our minutes, we'll make sure they're clear for the next meeting.
John Shaw, Public Service.
Kayla Gray, Director of Planning.
David Flanders, Tree Board.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys. All right, so first on our agenda for normal business, we have a request to establish a performance bond for road and infrastructure improvements on Wilson and Tarn Streets. Assessors Platte 57-1, lots 121, 122, and 146 located on Wilson and Tarn Streets. Jay Thomas Investments is our owner and applicant. I'm also going to ask everybody to turn on their microphones if they would. So, something we're sort of all getting familiar with in South Kingston is that we are now live streaming all meetings that happen in this office. So, you'll see a camera behind and beside you all and the microphones, but so if we can, I ask everyone to, there's some awkwardness to it, but bear with us. We're all trying to make sure we're speaking into microphones so that that recording is coming through. Alarms and all. All right. Good morning, gentlemen. Could you just state your names for us quickly and then give us an overview of where we're at?
Sure. Good morning. I'm John Kenyon, Attorney for the Applicant.
Good morning. John D'Agostino, Owner of the Subject Property.
Dave Russo, Project Engineer.
So, maybe actually I'll start, which is that, so we're basically here to establish a performance bond for the project. A bond estimate was provided to the TRC members. I'm going to just acknowledge that I communicated with Dave Russo yesterday a bit about some of the corrections we wanted to see in that estimate. Sort of for our purpose today, we can talk through any questions about that, discuss what the changes are, and then sort of talk about where we go from here.
We received the comments. Those are all of them. Can you recap?
So, basically, the comments were that the summation of the total of the estimate did not necessarily seem to line up exactly with the numbers that were there. So, that was a comment given yesterday by email. There were a couple of things that seemed to be just carryover, small dollar items that were left that were cleaned up. There were adjustments to the width of the surface course of, yes, the depth of the surface course of pavement from 1.5 inches to 2.5 per town spec, and some changes to potentially the linear feet of roadway. I think that we gave that it may not have matched the linear feet that were necessary for that. And what is...
No, even for inch and a half, I think that it's more than 82.
And I think honestly I had a question for you all, which is, when Rich and I were quickly looking at this yesterday, the curbing is proposed to be bonded, but not the surface course of asphalt. And our thought was that those seemed like they were probably something that would be done together, and I didn't know if there was a correction that you wanted to make.
Do you carry the bituminous berm over as a bonded item, but not the surface course? Usually the bituminous berm is integral to the surface. That's fine. Yeah, the curbing would be those sections on the rear, right? That's normally what you do, yeah. But, yeah, just, are you going to bond the surface course? Just carry that number over.
So, you all are, right now, have been, basically, we're trying to get it so that at the end of the month, at the work, the regular session of the planning board, this would go as a consent agenda item to them. We've discussed some changes to it now. We'll do one last check to make sure no one else has comments or changes to things they'd want to see, but I'll tell you sort of how I think this can go forward to keep you on track for the end of the month, which is, if you can have that revised estimate in hand, but just email it over to us as soon as possible, if we can have an opportunity to be okay with that number by the end of the week, and by "we" I mean Planning and the Department of Public Services, then I believe the TRC can make a recommendation for the bond to be established, the exact amount to be set based on DPS, and Plannings sign off by the end of the week. That puts us in a position where the agendas for the meetings at the end of the month can all go forward with the right dollar amount, and our staff comments can have everything as it should be smoothly for you all. Any other comments or questions on this around the table? All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
So, actually, you know, with that, we should make, that is something that should take a motion. So, the motion would functionally be a motion for this to be forwarded to the planning board as part of their consent agenda, following confirmation of the exact bond amount with Department of Public Services and planning staff, if somebody is willing to make that motion. All right, all those in favor? Okay, next on our agenda, we have Development Plan Review for Kingston Cleaners. This is a request to construct a 4,000-square-foot addition to the rear of the existing structure and make landscape improvements with waivers requested from the landscape standards as outlined in the subdivision and land development regulations. We are located on Assessors Platte 56-3, Lot 97, located on High Street. Kingston Cleaners, Inc. is our applicant. Honor Roll LLC is the property owner. Good morning, gentlemen. How's everyone doing?
Good.
How are you?
Good, good. If you'd start by just stating your names for our record, that'd be good, and then we can just go into where we are from here.
Once again, John Kenyon, Attorney for the Applicant.
I jumped into this recently, so I believe it came to the TRC previously, and there were some questions about the landscaping, so Mark's been retained, so we're just going to have Mark go over what he's proposing now.
Great.
So, I also came in a bit late. I got the comments from the original TRC meeting. Then I went through, looked at the ordinance, and wrote up this narrative. I'm sure you guys have all read it. So, what I did was I went through, and I tried to look and see where we could form and where we were looking for some relief. So, essentially, due to the front, the fact that the state had recently gone through and done a lot of work along High Street, it was reflected to me that the grading, that we'd like to get relief from the front planting requirement. So, that's the first one. And then, as we move along to the perimeter, the clam shack, there is a use that they have, they put some picnic tables out in front, and it's a little tight there, and again, it does have some issues with the grading that was done, obviously, just recently. So, rather than adhering to that strictly with a 10-foot planting area along the perimeter, they were suggesting placing one tree along, on the neighboring property. There's a couple of trees that overhang the fence that would prohibit us from following the letter of the ordinance that would require severely cutting those back and/or removing them in order to get something up against the, rather large, to overhang and straddle the property. So, the one tree goes a long way into supplementing some of that screening, and then behind the clam shack itself, there is a fence that basically creates a private yard for storage, six feet high. Two of the wings of that are clearly our client's, the back part of it is the neighboring property. My understanding that that fence is historical to that neighboring property for something like 50 years, as long as anyone can remember. It's brand-new. And then, the front of it is actually the clam shack. So, it's this interior yard area they store picnic tables, they store some stuff in the restaurant, and it is very well-studied, public, public neighboring property. So, we're looking for relief, basically, from this area towards the street, because I think it's actually doing it. And then, from that point on, we adhere to the ordinance, so, based on the adjacent properties and even the transition yards, we look at the diagrams that we're meeting on.
And Mark, on this, the property in the, this corner, can you just explain the elevation difference there? When you look at the plan, it's really tough to see what it's really like. When you go out there, do you see that?
It's about 35 feet. So, essentially, excuse me, all the screening that our client would be putting on this property is benefiting only the public from seeing residential. There's a hill that comes up, and you see a property here that's out of his, not on his property. You've got a six-foot fence wall that residential property here clearly looks out over that or the second floor because of the privacy screening they have up on this area. You have no chance of seeing the client's property from the ground level, from their second story kind of thing. At that point, you're standing at 45, 50 feet. So, in an effort to screen that, putting in a big London plane tree, which over time will actually screen that wall, which also has the added benefit of, actually, looking back in here, you're not going to see that piece of property which is otherwise unmaintained, and it's just, it's a big stand of not weeded. So, you know, along here, we're doing a good job to make sure there's a privacy hedge. It's evergreen. It's really going to do a good service. You have, even though at this point, I'd say we're going to adhere to that strictly, and with the trees. And with the evergreens. We get over here, there's a six-foot wall, which is there, still following that diagram that's showing that there is that minimal amount of landscaping that goes on below that edge, taking that six-foot wall fence. And then, around here, same thing. As we get up into this back area, there's 45 feet of what we could call woodland. We're supplementing that to try and adhere to the 20-foot transition yard setback. So, we've got more than 20 feet. So, we're taking advantage of some of these trees, underplanting those. And then, as far as the interior plantings, it seems, we've met the square footage, we've exceeded the square footage, the required square footage. I believe it was 8% required. We've got something like 11%. 11.8. It's not done with the interior islands, because it seems that's a little bit much to have to go through, and then we can figure all the dealing for this, and redo all the striping, including the islands. We're also going to relieve along the front of the buildings because there's existing sidewalks. We're not talking about removing out of the, how many of the trees are planted there, whatever is along that. So, and then, as we look along the other ends. Yeah, it's this slope in the backside here, so it's, there's an existing, we've got along there, there's a lot of surrounding ground, there are trees in there as well, and a ground cover. And that represents about 11.8% of the requirement of the parking area, and required to have 5% based on the lot, parking area being between 25 and 20, so we should want to double that, but not strictly placed all around. And then, the other areas are industrial, and because there's rights of way and there's existing vegetation, we really can't go back.
I understand the easements playing a role there on the south side. There's easements back, easements back and forth between the properties. I have a question for you. So, when we're counting, when you're doing your calculation on the interior landscaping, we're counting this whole area, right?
That's right.
And help me understand the difference between this, how, why you look at that and call it interior as opposed to perimeter?
Why we're calling that interior? Well, because the property line back here falls on the interior property.
Of the property line?
And then, there is, this is all, that's where the neighboring property, that's sort of in an area where, I understand, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe they've worked well together in the past about keeping vehicles.
Yeah, yeah. I think we heard about that a little at the last TRC meeting. I say it because the way we tend to look at perimeter landscaping is the perimeter of your circulation and power of the driving area, more so than the perimeter of the property line. But, looking at that, the, I think that there, it would be beneficial to have, basically, to figure out sort of where you're exceeding, what's perimeter, and have that pulled out as sort of one or the other, right? Basically, the perimeter landscaping, I believe, requires you to have 10 feet of landscaping. I'm looking at that as seeing it's clear, based on the scale here, it's 20-plus feet in areas, but it might be beneficial to, and I'm not saying necessarily revise the plan to fill it, but perhaps either revise the plan or the narrative to have, just to do a depiction of where that perimeter edge would be, being 10 feet, and then what the interior is, being the additional beyond that, perhaps. But, something that's sort of, I'm looking at that and thinking, when I look at that plan, I would likely be more inclined to call it perimeter plus landscaping, and the plus potentially can credit towards your interior, but I think it's sort of functioning as both. And that might honestly just be a discussion point with planning board at the end of the month, more than something you need to put work into writing in now.
Yeah. My question would be, I have to go back, but this being industrial use, that perimeter, so that would be more towards just the ordinance for landscaping and not transition.
Yep, exactly.
And this, that's the perimeter. Does that meet? Yeah, it's an interesting question.
Really, it's sort of that we have so many different places, the landscaping seems like that it holds from. It's not so many, really, but it's the two different places, right? And the zoning ordinance, the transition yard is about the land use on the other side. The perimeter interior is about the perimeter of your parking area and your accessways on the site. And so, we sort of consider them as separate pieces. I think this is a very reasonable approach. I will also say, from the last meeting, this has come a long way in having a lot more. I think that the applicant is well-served to have you working with him and putting work into it. And this is a vastly different and likely far improved plan from where we were last time, but I think it, we would, that will be largely a talking point. I think it would be great for at the end of the month, when you are at the planning board, to have a calculation on pulling out a 10-foot strip there for perimeter, what then would be strictly interior and what then is perimeter on that. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So, try and get benefit of both, split that.
Right, exactly. I mean, you're, exactly, like, it's meeting the perimeter, and then that's sort of the idea of there being 11% interior is largely actually you're more meeting the perimeter in a further area.
Probably meeting here.
And probably meeting interior as well, but, yeah, exactly, but, right, and just, that's more of a, it's more of a wordsmithing in what is what than what I see there is problematic.
I did not see, first, variation. And I can see that you are making efforts to, I would like to know, in this area, what are you going to do to stabilize directly behind, what are you going to stabilize that area that has quite a bit of a change, a bit of a slope there, and then beyond that, of course, you have another area.
Yeah, it's not going to exceed 13%. And I would strongly advise you to test this soil.
Oh, yeah, we've discussed that, of course, yeah.
Also, the retaining law, there's a portion of which it comes across, basically, it's a neighboring site, and then it ends, but when it ends, you've still got, basically, a very steep area that isn't, doesn't appear to be stabilized, unless you're assuming that they're not, they are, they're going to have that. So, is that something that you've thought about?
So, the backfilling, we're taking a look at that.
Where the, 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 the.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that, but I'm sure there's going to be some site work that needs to be done, and that, and that.
Maria, is that on the south side of the neighboring property? Also, the, since there are no islands, it's kind of a wide open site, and I understand that, uh, it's, but there are two points of access that really want that here, and you have all this pavement, and I'm sure you're aware of the MBL situation, that, uh, on the, 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 so, obviously, any space is, it's, um, great point, it's, it's possible. This long stretch here, where there's a sidewalk, I would strongly advocate for, even doing something like, I understand, one of the, there's another business right there that has, like, a, 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 either plug that or look.
It's basically...
Look, I know that...
There's a little sign of some tiny, little bits of, 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 of,[1519.12]
Seems like it when I drive by.
Yeah, there is. I can evaluate that and update the plan to make sure that we are taking credit.
Yeah, take credit where credit's, where credit's due. You have a tough site you're trying to do some changes to, so whatever's planted, having, or is being planted in there, it's not before yet.
I would also suggest that the planting narrative and the diagrams be switched out for the town's narrative and diagrams.
Okay.
Since you talk about the mulch, and the town says, well, make sure your, the mulch is loaded against the tree, but just other details that are in there, and we're just trying to make everything uniform.
Okay, so the notes themselves.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're in the subdivision regulations, yeah.
I'll put those in.
Cool.
And are you going to show me wherever you're moving the dumpster right now, where there's trees?
There's actually room there, yeah. Yeah, there is, yeah.
A couch?
Yeah, we'll make sure that they have a little rubber space.
Yep.
Josh, are any of those parking spaces lost? Uh, no, no need.
Um, let's think, other things we have, I know that's sort of our purpose today, so a part of our purpose today was largely to look at the new landscape plan, right? That was largely why you were all back in front of the TRC. Last month, there was a recommendation you could proceed on to the planning board. Property owner wanted to give it one more chance, knowing that landscape was a big planned topic, and having now Mr. Miller on board. My, and other pieces that have changed recently, though, you want to speak quickly about your communications with DOT and what you've gotten from them relative, I know you've received official communication back from RIDOT relative to stormwater on this, I believe, so if you want to speak to that quickly, we might as well.
So just when, the way it was submitted this time around, had updates that we had coordinated with RIDOT, so the drainage, we, I think I drew a sketch to the meeting, just to show you folks last, last month, so I'll just flip through it. We get a letter from RIDOT, and heard that based on our stormwater analysis and the reconfiguration of the existing drain lines, that it would be impacts the system, therefore, any further permitting would be required. So this was the updated site plan, which basically needed that as part of the construction of the building, existing drain line that connects the parking area down the alleyway to the state system. But the drain line would be kind of, and they asked that we.
Revised the plan.
Figure out, relocate that next around the building, and it was, on its way to the state, just the way I said, so this revised site plan was finally what the state.
And you'll show that on the.
If any. Any other comments, questions around the table? All right, great, well, thank you, gentlemen. So you will be going to the planning board at the end of the month. The planning, you're going to the planning board, you two, I think, are familiar with this, you are sort of reading in on things coming on. You're going to the planning board because when you ask for a waiver, it needs to be granted by the planning board itself. This body does not have the ability to grant waivers from the regulations. So you'll be going to the planning board at the end of the month for discussion on that. I think you got some feedback on landscaping, with thoughts on sort of further improvements that can be made, and just some talking points on sort of what we count as what. Do you have any other questions? Feel free to ask them now, or?
Do we have to send out notices because of the waiver?
Let me check and get back to you. Let me check and get back to you.
How about modifications to this plan, updating it, based on what we discussed? Town.
Yeah, so if you're going to make changes to this plan, we, planning board packets, based upon calendar.
So I should update the narrative based on what we discussed?
Change the notes.
Change the notes and highlight that front planting event so that it's more obvious.
Great, so you'd see that as, you'd all see that as a condition of the development plan, if we're both, like, example, waste water flows approved by the P S for local control, but that's.
Yeah, there are no flows, but.
All right, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have development plan review advisory to the zoning board for Wakefield Compassion Center. Proposed change of use to a medical marijuana compassion center, use code one hundred, with waivers requested from the landscape standards as outlined in the subdivision and land development regulations. This review is, this TRC review is advisory to the planning board, but the planning board's review is advisory to the zoning board on the acquired special use permit. The property is located on Assessor's Platte fifty-seven dash four, lot sixty-two, at forty Charles Street. Seven Point Inc. is our applicant. Belmont Chaufrers Park Inc. is our owner. Good morning. So if you all would start by just giving us everyone's names for the record, where we're at, and then a summary of sort of what the proposal is before us. This is a new proposal before the TRC, and we can go from there.
Lisa Saravubia for owner of the property.
Gregory Robach, applicant. I'm also an engineer, more of a building engineer, not the, not the land development engineer. Chris Palmer did the plans. He is currently out of the country. And our landscape architect's not available today, so any specific detail questions, we may have to get back to you on. So generally speaking, we're going to refurbish the building, apply for a compassion center once the applicant, application's available through the state. The state is still working on that process, so we're trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve, have a piece of property that's approved through the town, so we can use that in the application. Understanding that we can't get the zoning permit until the state application is complete, so it's kind of a chicken and egg kind of thing. So we're looking at refurbishing the building. There's a couple other existing buildings on site which we're not going to touch. And because we're applying for a marijuana compassion center, it's a change of use, so we have to comply with the landscape code. A little bit of a catch twenty-two. We comply fully with the landscape code, and we have the ten-foot buffer. We'd lose a lot of our parking, which is required for the buildings, so that's why we're requesting waiver. We have proposed some landscaping on the west side of the, of the building, and then all along Charles Street. Remove what's currently existing and then replanted with native non-invasive species. Not looking to do a whole lot of improvements to the, the parking, basically just restripe it.
I'd like a little more explanation about what this business would do and how it would function and what kind of traffic we would expect from the designated, non-designated.
Hours of operation.
I believe within the traffic study that was provided, you see details on how generations were created. If we were to go into detail, we could base it rates of growth, the medical cannabis patients in Rhode Island. We extrapolated it back as the opening date, came up with the total amount of patients, and then evenly distributed that share of patients throughout nine compassion centers. Based on governor's budget, recent approvals from the D B R, there'll be an addition of six centers in Rhode Island. So eleven point one percent share for each of the nine centers gave us a set amount of patients. We felt as though that was high, but we wanted to use conservative numbers based on our geographic location as well as population densities. And then have included our proposed hours of operation. And we'll see within the traffic study, they analyzed the key volumes of traffic with the morning commute and things like that, and they analyzed, based on my experiences as the chief operating officer of the Summit Compassion Center in Wallack. I was able to study and do all the staffing, so I have the trends on when patients were arriving, and I used to look at the statistics from my prior experiences. And use that in conjunction with traffic statistics. As far as, really answering any questions.
There, there probably is not anything in the I T that's really, you know, for this kind of, one based on other factors, or maybe one say.
The data we did use is pretty much the same.
The other centers, how long have they been in place? All of them kind of.
Pretty much the same.
Chris, if you would just read hours of operation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not used to.
No, that's okay, that's all right. Largely, it's because we, we televise, we record, and so we go back to them, and so.
Okay.
No problem.
So Monday through Thursday, ten thirty A M. to six P M. Friday, eight A M. to eight P M. Saturdays and Sundays, ten A M. to four P M. We've mimicked what the existing centers were doing because they haven't found any, called it two hours of operations. Table. I would only make a decision, what the experiences have shown, but want to prepare for a long weekend. Friday seems to be the day to get things done. We were busy on Fridays. Sorry for the day, because I didn't ask all the patients that came on their reasons, but Fridays, we got the business done. And then again, I tried to mimic what the existing centers did.
So did you adjust your hours that was originally Friday, Sunday, Thursday, and six? Is it, or did you adjust it or, in the day it was, if they was over the year?
We started with. Same amount of hours, because it was also new territory, experience, and nobody had ever done this in Rhode Island, so we had less hours, less staff in the beginning. And then as patient volume has increased, and doctors are becoming more comfortable, as this is a true function, patient numbers have increased, and hours have increased as well.
Is there any, is this primarily distribution and storage, or is it also of knowing?
We could, we could allow all of this kind of distribution. And the storage that would be, that would be always consistent with use for the near future. Of all, based on the D B R standards and practices. And we're still waiting for. There was a new set of proposals that have been approved. It's still a little gray in my opinion, as far as if you, if you grow for yourself or not, if we're going to be purchasing, pretty much all of that from outside. Businesses, so people that have cultivation licenses in the state that are allowed to cultivate the cannabis and sell to the retailers. So we would only be buying what we would need for the next few days, store much.
What form are you buying it in?
It's already packaged, sealed, and has an R F I D. tag. It's in a seat-to-sale tracking program system when it leaves.
One that you're selling.
Correct. And then there's a manifesto, the logs, so when it leaves the cultivation center, there's a log, and then we have to approve what we've taken in, and then we enter it into our program, and the state police, and the Department of Business regulation, as I assess, from the local records, as well as our cameras.
So you would be getting deliveries, right?
That's what that's on.
Chris, is there, do you have experience in how the deliveries arrive? Are they large trucks, vans, like, is there, I, we asked for a traffic flow circulation point, if you're right, is, is. I imagine these are not eighteen-wheelers arriving, but do you have experience from your other location on the size of vehicle that do the deliveries?
Summit used a minivan. But now that the length of it has changed, because the, the delivery seems to be on the, the. Will not be on trucks.
I mean, I think this is sort of a, and I, this might honestly be a redundant question, so bear with me if it is, but one thing that, a question I have is, do, so it sounds like you don't do any processing in, in the facility itself. There's not.
Absolutely not. Every product that comes in.
Um, that's.
So I've got a couple of little questions.
Suggestions?
The parking on the, they show in the plan as far as the, they would help, I think, kind of call out which structures, like, which use of it.
Yes. Yes.
That is important, I think, to try to avoid.
Demand.
So I think that would help give the board. The other question I have is, is there any way that you use, any information from the suburbs of, or that you can, or, 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 or use the I T, or is. Would you? Could you use, in your experience, that if they, like, were, you know, satisfied, or, or, or situations, give the order, whether, whether, or, what type of things, which really is, based on your.
I think it would be very good, certainly. Take, show what the present system centers have, or any, right, it's limited data, as far as, and I'm sorry to repeat that, but as far as each center has different amount of generations. Summit shares a lot of, a lot of other businesses, which is never difficult, because, correct, or, in my opinion, which I'm not citing as fact, this park is a lot more than a community, which is looking more to. It is more than Summit, but it is less than Slater. Slater started off with a little bit less than this, and they purchased the property, which is.
I'd say. Where is Summit, where is Slater?
Summit is located in Wallack on Jefferson Boulevard. Slater is in Providence, across from the Post Office, and Green Lake, um, compassion centers.
Wallack also uses least detail.
As when.
Traffic volume there is pretty intense, and I know this, I always, it's, 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 that, that's why, I, 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 watch that as well, it is really, it's, and, and that's why when I look at the numbers of ninety-five, and ninety-five, and ninety, in a peak hour, but actually something a little lower. Just from my experience of Wallack, so, so, there's a lot of view, I mean, more is closer, and this, she don't really know what's, you don't know where all this is.
Well, it's going to be a zone process, so right now, yes, they are very busy, but they are getting probably forty percent.
That's right.
Higher stay, but. Slater.
But this could become a busiest.
The zone that we would fall into is going to be a lottery system, so that what they're going to do is vet each application, whoever has a completed application will go into a lottery, essentially, your name's in a hat. So our zone is going to be West Lee, Charleston, South Kensington, Compton, Richmond, Exeter. I think we got one, but there'll be one center in that zone, and then there'll be another one, uh, throughout, so there's a lot of, a lot of state. We've been trying to try to extrapolate from the nation, but it's going to be anywhere near the volume, uh, that you.
See.
Well, the other issues, I, these are pretty narrow streets, these aren't, these aren't, you know, Charles, both Charles and, and. Sherry, yeah, both of those, and then also, this analysis doesn't take into account, which, which would be another access to this. I just worry about these streets. Also, Quovada's is loading outside the back there, the fish places on, that intersection gets very difficult. But I think, because of that primarily, there's some things out there that cause it to go around, there's an area, narrow streets, and you're introducing, I mean, I don't, I don't, I didn't see, here, what the system flows on. Like, if, if one hundred and ninety is double flow, or, or is that a modest increase over what's existing? A lot of times we like to see that, what do you, what do you, I didn't see it in here, maybe it is in here somewhere, but, you know, a lot of times we'll see, you know, there's four thousand vehicles on it, oh, a hundred vehicles doesn't really affect that. Well, in this case, a hundred and ninety vehicles, it's severely affect Cherry and Robinson, and the streets.
I will review that and relay any concerns to the team that did the traffic study, but they wanted to anticipate those concerns you brought up, and they actually did the study, and they wanted to do the study during high-volume tourist season traffic. And we live here, we don't want to be the guys that put a black eye on the town, so we tried to do it.
No, I know, I know, nobody wants that. It doesn't help your business any, but to have it, if it was really, and I, I, I looked at the, your. No, I know, I know, nobody wants that, it doesn't help you business any, but to have it, if it was really, and I, I, I looked at the, um, your, uh, your level of service at, at the intersections, I liked that you looked at these two intersections, I think it works. Um, the only one issue was with Commercial Drive, um, where, where left turn, you know, out of Commercial, which, um, I think that's the light, right? Where's Commercial Drive westbound left through? That's the back of, that's, that's the back of Belmont, no, Charles goes outside, it's Commercial, we're in the back of, Charles, Charles goes right, Commercial. I mean, there's only, well, there's only one place where the level of service really changed, went from a C to a D. When it was Cherry Lane Northbound, that's what it was. You know, it's a narrow street. How much of it was, was Cherry Lane, or jump?
Can you explain, uh, who is responsible for, uh, determining the level of security and what, um, if any additional, um, municipal obligations and what would be relevant to that?
We're addressing security, but we don't wanna, like, block, uh, or, uh, do respect. I don't wanna go and fill the whole security tube until, uh, these first few stages. My intentions would be to follow, um, if a local employer or hospital or certain airline or something comes through, who lives in town, is comfortable working with everybody. We would have as needed, uh, security that not only walks the property, but also directs traffic. Each, I note that when I worked at Summit, they had, um, staff parking, uh, attendants that were not in a security uniform. Because they felt as though that compromised patients' experience. So the latest center on the outside has a complete parking team, a valet, but they are organizing to make sure that the flows are followed. I think that the reason they're doing that is because they're busy and they're, uh, willing to, um, address the need as it surfaces.
We would definitely take a recommendation, uh, take a recommendation. So, uh, my family, we would use, uh, the second, we see, so based on what, make a recommendation, is the best way of being this way.
And how would that be a part of the process? Like, uh, T R C, then planning board, then selling board, and then, but you're also waiting for the state, right? So would you not be aware of the security, um, uh, that would be put in place or would you?
I think it does require that, uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, this is.
So we wouldn't know that, that would be done?
Uh, I could check with Taylor. But I believe, uh, part of the special use permit application, you have to submit our application from the state, which would mean that it has been declared. We have a complete comprehensive plan and before we got our special use permit, Town would be able to weigh in on concerns that we addressed at that point. But we certainly could work together along the way, it's something that Town would like to see. I don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, and that's all.
Yes.
On that, there's part, I am not an expert on the D V R regulations. So can, I'm gonna look to you all as my experts on the D V R regulations around the table at this moment. What is there, what, do you, do we know what the security requirements from D V R are that Jay alluded to? I mean, I, I understand, I know portions of it, but the portions I know are, are, are not relative to physical security control. They're more, you need cameras monitoring your entrances and exits, you need, I know that side of things, I know the physical layout side of it or have some familiarity with that. Is, are there requirements in the D V R regulations about having security presence, like human security presence there? Or are they infrastructure requirements, like lighting, cameras? That'd be something, if you guys don't know that right now, it'd be something interesting for us to know. I do...
Right, it's just gotta prove, uh, central question. So, uh, it's okay, I would print those out, uh, through, uh, format, but I could email you or cut paste up, do a direct reference to the page and article of the law that they, uh, filed. But it, the ball is rolling fast, I don't have your answer.
No, 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 and that's totally fine, it's just something that I, is gonna be a question that we would like to have you have an answer to at some point. It doesn't necessarily need to be right up here giving us at this point or anything, but the question will come up and knowing where that requirement is helps us understand what pieces we might wanna do differently or require more or something.
I mean, I know there are limited access areas for staff based on your badges, uh, which door has some form of restriction, whether it be a code or your I D cards. Your I D cards, I know that they have to be issued from the state. Every employee has to be vetted, you'll be CD checks, vaults have to meet certain specifications.
Another robust regulation on security, I think what would be interesting for us all to know is if there are requirements for physical presence of se- a security officer of security detail or whatnot, something like that. Because it seems like that's the conversation I think that we're trying to have a little bit is, is there a need to have someone physically there directing traffic, ensuring things are happening right?
I will get you that answer.
And it'd be good for us to know whether or not D V R requires that and so it is a non-essential piece for us to regulate or whether or not that's a conversation we should have around the special use permit.
Regardless, I don't have a problem, I have somebody who's involved with the traffic, so if we have concerns of the narrow streets and exceeding what is required from the state, if that's something that you would like to see, we can just make that a concession that's, looks best.
Um, I'm gonna say, right, right now, I have a thought, which is, my thought is largely, um, with the way we regulate in town, we have a use code for marijuana retail facilities. The same use code is present for, you use that, use code for compassion center, that's the application you ordered here under today with us. It is the same use code we would use if and when the state regulations change to allow this to be a recreationally available facility. And in that scenario, because you have a permit in place for the compassion center, you have at that point a permitted use under our use code. And the change potentially from compassion center to retail would not be something add as a change of use. That is some sort of zoning speak on when and if it became recreational, as it sits right now, you would have a permit in place. My understanding from this quickly evolving industry is that the traffic implications and volume of flow when you, when that switch happens or has been seen to happen in other places, changes significantly, right? It changes significantly were it to go from a compassion center to an open retail facility. I would say we will largely be inclined to recommend that there is a condition attached to it that's your approval, that's a, if this becomes a recreational facility, we would revisit the traffic flow situation. Just because I think inevitably the traffic study we're looking at right now anticipates based on medical concerns. If that opens up to be a wider audience, anyone over twenty-one, for example, that is gonna change very significantly. And so I think that in sort of the idea of us all working forward together into the future, that is a point where we would want to revisit what is happening with traffic and see. There might be, for example, right now, it may be that we don't, there's only a real need to have a security or, or detail with traffic assistance at particular times that we know there to be high demand times. Those might increase some, somewhat, perhaps quite significantly in the future if we see that change happen. I understand this is very speculative, right, we're how state law has changed, a lot has changed before we get there. So that is something we would likely request of you all, sort of as we move forward, is that a condition gets written in here saying, if and when this becomes that, we would revisit the issue of traffic circulation with a better understanding of what the flows might be to that and what might be necessary to make sure that the roads are operating well at that point.
We would rather be proactive than reactive, we don't want to, uh, prevent it. So if we need to alter, um, recovers or differences so that they're not during travel hours, something of those laws, but we'll get to that point.
Right, exactly, we can do exactly that, right, get to that when we need to, but your permits that would, in this round, would, would acknowledge that that would be something that we would revisit at those points.
Um, you had supplied us with a map that shows the, uh, uh, and, um, it's sort of a, I don't know, identification, other perspective. This, um, site is in very, uh, moving by that.
And, and your thought on, the, the thought on the bike path is, um, can bring it a little further on, can I talk?
Well, I suppose it's an alternate, you know, um, since there is obviously concern about children, um, vicinity, that's something that we'd like to, uh, uh, maybe those, uh, uh, that'll...
Only because of a slim chance that we can, uh, have security walk through the property, as far as cannabis dealers in the property. Uh, I still realize this is a good, it's a good, it's a healthy brain, um, I have a master's degree in health, I'm very, uh, 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 it's a very concerning issue. The way I might address this though, maybe I could reach out to three towns at least in Congress and ask if I could get a little more of my experiences with that sometimes.
You know, check to see if these are hotspots, the Fedenkrain area, like that.
Yes.
Surrounding areas, that'd be good information.
And I'm still thinking of, I would like to see what that, that means. Maybe I gotta get.
Yeah.
But I think you're, I think you're, I think your inclination on where to go on that is largely supported on this side of reaching out to those police departments, getting a log of crime reports in and immediately adjacent to that area and seeing whether or not they're concerned a trend. Again, if there's a correlation they've drawn, what any increases have been, then we can actually ask for an advisory input from our police department to sort of review that, look at it, see if they have any particular concerns we're gonna wanna work for here too.
Well, you're not considering that, so I think that's a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, issue.
If any or all of these things, if they are related to, say, to hide any increase in, um, use, so that, is that related to, so that there's an increase in volumes?
Any other question of the park control, do you want parks to be as, or are parks to be as, or are parks to be as, set apart as all the, you know, maybe you don't have.
Well, actually, you have to hear, because now this. It's twenty-four.
But you're going to see a ten-foot barrier of road, but that will be a big, big.
All right, let's, let's talk for a second about, let me see if, actually, let me see something before we move past traffic. And then I'm gonna see if anyone else has anything on traffic, so the topic will happen. When you are, when we're in front of the planning board, it would be very helpful to have your traffic engineer present. Um, you're gonna want somebody who can speak to exactly how the study was done, what they used, where, where we're seeing the decrease in level of service. We're gonna, we're gonna want some, that you would be well served to have your traffic engineer present for that conversation, um.
We would have had it once today, but today was gonna be more of a meet, greet, and listen to the town's concerns, and then on our next follow through, we would have a thirteen.
Yeah, completely.
Well, it's, we were trying to be.
And completely fine, no, it's, it's no problem, I just, when you, particularly when you're in front of the planning board on it, and the audience is a little bit more filled with people who are curious, as opposed to people that just have other applications before the board. Those questions, when they come up, will be similar to the questions you just heard here today, but having that traffic in there will be so.
Yeah, and the only thing with traffic, I mean, I, I, I was, I'm concerned, I like, I like the resolution, actually. I mean, 'cause I'm concerned that if this ever changes somehow into a different type of facility, that this doesn't really mean anything at that point, but I like the thought of revisiting that. I also thought that if that weren't to happen, then it might be an opportunity to have a peer review on this, um, you know, from a different set of eyes. But that may not be necessary with the condition of, listen, if this changes its, um, its format, I guess for lack of a better word, then, then we revisit the traffic at that point. You know, improvements may be necessary at that point to traffic, but it's just not, it's not.
When I speak with the, the folks and I get to find that, I'll also get accident data.
Yeah, it's not so much accidents, it's just, I think it's, I'm worried, I'm worried that the neighborhoods are now inhibited getting through this area and things like that, that's all I worry about. And you know, and I'll tell you from, again, from working close to one of these places, it's really that, I'll tell you, that Friday afternoon was every single Friday was a mess.
It's not like it's less of a rest.
That's right.
Holidays, definitely.
Holidays, it was holidays, it was traffic control out on the street, an officer detail out there, so, this was on Corless Street. Now, now that has a different surrounding type, I mean, first it's got the post office right across the street, which is, it's a tremendous amount of traffic. And it's got other businesses along the way, so it's a different condition, I understand that. And also against Corless Street, there's that Loop Road, that one way that goes around, it's very busy. Home Depot's right down the, I mean, there's a lot of things going on in that area.
You had traffic before Slater was there.
It was traffic before Slater was there, but, um, it got a lot worse, so. But maybe in order to avoid third party, uh, or peer review, in addition to what you described about the situation.
And instead of having to look back into those, what we, what we, you know, yeah, like, can we just restrict this?
And that's the piece where we, we, we really can't, because we permit a use code, and then a use code right now allows, so that's why I think, that's why it seemed important to me that we have another piece in there to revisit in that condition. And so functionally down the way we can do it right now is to say, you're, you're permitted up to a certain understanding of traffic flow and volume as depicted today. If the situation and expansion of the business expands to provide retail service, that will in- increase the clientele, increase the level of service, increase the expansion intensity of the business. That intensification is something we would wanna redo again. And I think we have to sort of slow on intensification more than on components of this, of the allowance, but.
And at the same time, we don't know what the state's gonna do, they could turn around, approve, RAC, and say that the medical people have their license, we're gonna do another application process, and there's gonna be separate businesses, so. Yeah, we don't, we really, we can only make assumptions at this point, and react when the truth comes.
So I think the idea of having it come, as it changes and just acknowledging that we have this framework in place that we are going to move through and that's the way. I do think the idea of a peer review on the traffic when it goes, if and when it becomes recreational, that, that will be a very large, large traffic generator and a very new industry. It is something we would largely be well served to ask for a third-party review on the traffic of, just because it is, it is not as simple as sort of lining up the numbers and with standard industry practices. It's an industry that's changing quickly, but that is something that is further out down the line.
Greg and I were seeking out properties before we had met the family of the property. And we tried to choose the best alternative, and if you try to move closer to the bowling alley, you've got a lot of high school traffic, there's a concern over there, along Tower Hill Road, there's a concern over there. So we tried to choose the lesser of all the evils, and we know that it's not gonna please everybody, but we did really try to think about the town when we picked that location.
And inevitably, we all know that all development brings traffic. Successful commercial development of any kind brings more traffic, if that's how it does well.
Well, but, but the, but the pushback you're gonna get is that the exits are, two of them are sort of through neighborhoods, in a sense, I guess, even across from Belmont is, is the neighborhood. You know, and then Robinson is another access, I mean, so that's the problem, is that you increase traffic flow through neighborhoods.
But you were, but you were promoting that through the way you're supposed to, how they would.
We didn't promote it, but, but they have.
I misspoke, I'm sorry.
They have an access out the back.
But that seems to go right through a neighborhood.
Yeah, that they're required to go right-hand, it goes through, but, but I'm just telling you that that's an existing access, it's different. And this is an existing access as well, but it's a change of, it's a, no, you know, yeah, it's a little bit of a point there, a little bit of a point there. But, um, but this access affects more homes than does that particular access. And we did criticize that, by the way, we were critical of that. And we required right-hand out only and all those things, and we could require that here too, I suppose. You know, everything's gotta head down Charles, I mean, that would be, that would be, that would be an equivalent response. If you're, if you wanna, if you wanna compare, if, if, if you wanna compare this application to Brute Awakenings, we would ask that you go right-hand turn only and go out to the light. That would change your traffic study tremendously, and it would make that traffic light not function, and I'm telling you right now, it will not function. With a hundred and, and, uh, you know, a hundred and ninety cars in that peak hour going out to that traffic light, it wouldn't function.
And so.
I think we're actually, well, it's a situation, like, was a time from that home, there was traffic, that, 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 I don't know, the state should have timed it. So, a lot of issues, and we have to pay, we have almost twenty years, all things provided, and provided not.
I think you might be enforcing my point, I think you might be enforcing my point, that this could be a problem. I'm just telling you, now, you're telling me right now that, you're telling me what I've observed is that that traffic light backs up.
It's changed.
It's changed, right, but it's worse, is what you're saying.
No, it's not now, but at the very beginning, it had a higher resource, meaning so it was light.
All right, I, I, I think we wanna, I think we wanna move on.
Yeah, there's, so, I, and because I can never move on without saying something, um. Largely what you have, right, is from where you're going, from, from your site, traffic's going out Cherry Lane to Main Street, out Charles Street to one oh eight. Similar, I'm gonna piggyback on what Rich was saying about the Brute Awakening case. In that scenario, they're told to go right turn only out of the Brute Awakening site, which is the zero-wampum property, throughout from, we all know what we're talking about. So that it is not going through that residential neighborhood. A similar consideration here might be something that restricts traffic from going down Robinson, which directs them deeper into a residential neighborhood. Inevitably, at the Brute Awakening site, the properties that were on that road, that's on one side, commercial and the other residential, inevitably, some of those properties are being, going to be impacted by a flow of commercial traffic because of the nature of that road as a way to get back to the main road. That, to me, functions somewhat similarly to Cherry Lane in that regard. There are residential homes on the other side of Cherry Lane, however, that it straddles a district, and inevitably, it is a road that you might use to connect. Right, and largely because of your island, you're forced to do that anyway, but people coming out here may be able to go that way. So that might be a conversation point we end up having with the traffic engineer about whether or not we want to see that just only impacting residential properties to the point of getting cars as quickly as possible to the main major roads and not further, deeper into that residential neighborhood.
Also, uh, when you, on the next day, on the planning board, this isn't really a landscape plan, it's not a landscape worksheet, so we'd want to submit a more readable, specific landscape. So your landscape architect should be able to help you in that regard, and then often, um, the case is that when an applicant asks for a waiver, they try to demonstrate that they can add other landscape material in other portions of the site.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
So those are the types.
Sure.
I can't tell, I can't tell from basically what I think, who has it, I have, I have. That would be one way of solving both issues, those are things that we need to call in our C D. I think we wanna clarify our scope of work, for what our landscape architects are doing, meaning, uh, there's a great area of how we can comply. What Steve's saying is we just wanna have a better idea of what the town would like, we made a proposal on how to put more native, uh, basis solutions in place, how, uh, what we're looking for, so, how do we meet the middle?
Fair enough, can we roll out the landscape plan? Or? Yeah, like, let's roll out the worksheet. And that'll give us something to physically talk about, to be in that direction, reasonable or less make.
I think what our, Greg, is this correct, that Palmer actually implemented some of this because we were under the impression that the engineer would be speaking, not the landscape architect? So he submitted this to the engineer, and then the engineer put those changes on the proposed drawings. So that was what we attempted to do, um, because we were, we didn't think that the architect would be speaking, but it would just be the engineer.
Okay, so the, so basically, I, what I'm hearing you say is that the things I see, the things that were added on this plan are incorporated in your civil plan set?
Yes.
Am I, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is it more helpful for us to talk from the civil plan set that shows the exact same thing? Yeah, so here's, here's, first, first thoughts that are gonna come from probably every voice around the table. This is, this is, this looks, this looks rough, right, it doesn't, it doesn't look like a landscape plan, it's not the right dimensions as the same plans, it's, the, the information is illegible on it. It's, it's clearly just an image that's been stretched and dragged and drawn out.
Plant list on the plan, the size and number.
Yep, what is actually being proposed to be planted, what is the size of the plant, how does that size of the plant comply with the size of plants requested, and the subdivision regulations at planting? Um, sort of, there, there needs to be metrics that go with that too, right, that say, this is what the book requires, this is what we are proposing, and this is the amount of relief we're looking for. Sometimes people do this well in tables, tables tend to serve people well, this is the plant, this is the number of them, this is the size upon planting. I think, it just, give us, give us the full, the full data on it. In, in, okay, help.
In your plan, as far as the number of plants, the size, the locations, the species.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's see where those are.
You want that on the plan? I think the point is the plan, you need to be able to look at a bed and say, this bed's got six, whatever, whatever it correlates with the narrative, but there's, there's also a list on, that's a, that's a.
Every landscape architect knows that it's a difficult format.
And we will do that correctly, but I believe that that answers your question, that we just wanna see it on a narrative.
Yep.
On an official plan, drawn to scale, we'll do that, but I would like the opportunity to at least have an idea, is this something that you would like before we go forward and have we put everything on the plan? Could we look at that list of suggestions and recommendations by our architect and see if they fit the town's wishes, so that we don't do anything twice?
Sure, sure, do you wanna, do you wanna pull out your list and read them to us and we'll respond to them, or do you like us to silently read that on our own and respond to you quietly? There's sort of, the purpose of the meeting is largely for you all to present to us and us to respond to you. So, um, do you want to read this to us so we can discuss in detail what they are, or do we wanna just do this differently? Help me understand how you'd like to move through this. And it's really more than a list of the, the list of the things, it's the areas, a description of where it is, right? So on the site plan, we initially started, if, it is probably more helpful for us to work from the civil plans if you're telling me the plants show up on there too. So what you all, what I see on, on, on the plan here, and, that's okay, thanks, um, is that you're basically putting, I see the tree plantings here, proposed landscaping along the, basically along the street edge of Charles Street, right? The street trees proposed along there, are those existing trees or are those proposed?
So the first statement, the first statement in that narrative says remove all existing.
Correct, because it's oversized.
We would, so, and I would, I think what I would tell you is, if there are existing trees that are there, they need to be removed because they are in poor health or coming down, or because, what, like? Because we wouldn't necessarily make you pull them down and put in new plants if there are ones that are already established and larger than, you, you know, unless they're problematic for some reason, unhealthy, dying, not with sufficient soil area to keep doing. Okay. Right. Yeah, so what you have, I would say, what you have along the street edge, I'd say if there are trees that can stay, keep those trees. Um, you know, if there are, if there are already there, they're serving a good purpose, you don't have a desire to see them removed. We don't necessarily have a desire to see you pull out a tree that's closer to maturity and put in a younger one if it's, if it can be sort of supplemented with the other pieces, but. Um, and so that would be sort of one, one piece, I would say, to your, um, as a direction to your landscape architect.
Sorry, see, what's there?
And to be honest with you, I mean, there's, I don't think it's ever in our, like, from my point of view, we don't ever, we don't ever wanna ask you to become compliant in one sense and then become uncompliant in the other because of it, right? The uses that are out there, you have a fully developed site as it is today. It's landscape non-conformant today, the parking non-conformance is less, to exchange one for the other, it's non-conformance for non-conformance, it's not necessarily an improvement or a decrease in the non-conformance, it's almost trading one for the other. And so I do think it is a reasonable site to be asking for waivers. Um, I think the nature of the waiver, at the end of the day, we can give you some direction on this, particularly, I think you'll be largely looking for direction from our planning board member who's around the table, because it is the planning board who can give relief, at the end of the day, who grants that waiver. So there's a piece where there is not a scenario where you walk away from our meeting today and we say, and that is what's gonna give you the gold standard for the landscape relief, because that's not our yes to give you, it is a yes you need to get from the full planning board, that negotiation piece. Um, I think one thing that I have heard coming up, we've been talking about, is that fence, is the idea of a fence along the bike path. I think that that might be something we would, would like to see, something that is providing some sort of a visual buffer there. I understand that asking you to put in landscaping there means losing a parking aisle, means losing a significant amount of your parking on that site, and it's likely not a better scenario for anybody. But getting to a place where you put forward, and now I'm circling back to Maria's point, a narrative that says, we propose a, we cannot provide this here because of X, we would then be looking to put in a six-foot-high wooden fence, right? Like, and, just illustrate what those pro- alternative proposals are in those places, as to what the intention was and how close you can get to it as for your proposal. And having, just having those details spelled out puts you in a position where the planning board is going to know what the relief being requested is and what their, what is being sort of met as a consolation prize on getting there.
The other, along the lines of fencing though, that the other sites that I've seen are chain link fences with gates, is that what this is gonna be? Is that a requirement by the state? I mean, you're saying no, but the other side, I'm just telling you around the, around the state, the other sites have that, so. But that's a choice that they're making, it's not a requirement? Okay. Well, may, it may not, but you don't know, it may not be a choice. Like, I'm just telling you that the other sites in the state have chain link fences, and they're like Fort Knox, but that's different than what you're describing, it's not a, it's not a.
Forleef and Portsmouth doesn't have fence around it either.
The one in Providence has a fence all the way around, with a gate. Okay, that's fine.
Chris, so that would be, that would be a point to talk about, right? So really what you'll end up with after this T R C meeting is a summary of a whole lot of lists of things that'll come up, we're sort of queuing you up for all the questions we wanna have answered. Um, the fencing piece would be good to know, if the state is gonna require, requires there to be chain link fencing around the whole site, well, we certainly would all wanna know that. Look into it, let us know what that position is.
And also, um, it's, it's important to note that landscaping is not purely for aesthetic reasons, when you have, uh, large areas that are pervious, adding, um, beds, whether they're trees or trunks or grass areas, helps to infiltrate stormwater and is better overall.
So I would suggest.
Have you thought about, on the landscape plan, have you thought about whether or not there are places where, I'm looking at sort of areas that you have, you have sort of just striping patterns today, or islands that are, things that are starting to appear to form as, as islands. Reagan, maybe you can help me see the difference between places that are sidewalk and island, if I'm getting confused here, but I'm wondering if any of those hatched areas, specifically, I'm looking at the triangle adjacent to the bike path, if there's a, a way to put that, some planting in there as an interior landscaping percentage?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so that would be perfect to show on the landscape plan is where you would. And so that would be perfect to show on the landscape plan, is where you would be doing that planting, 'cause it goes towards your interior parking lot landscaping, it, it's, it's you actually asking for less relief if you're gonna plant them at the end of the day. It's, it's not that you're asking to not plant them, so have your landscape architect incorporate those island spaces as well, that would help you.
Can they, would landscape put in, the, the dark? Are there other uses, those on the site? Are you, are you planning to occupy all of these buildings?
For this one?
Just, uh, 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 try, try. So these other buildings will be other uses? Yeah, again, I don't think traffic study has it there.
Right.
That's the area here.
Yeah.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if a portion of the site is currently being used for storage, it's almost, the site plan should probably indicate that. If we get in a situation where you propose a parking layout, that has, we have all these spots, and the reality of those spots will be occupied by trucks, and we don't have any use. I think you should. I think your plan.
Should, should, should.
So how will any, um, lighting be integrated to the site? Is any of that determined by V D R, or? We had a long discussion last night, I worked on lighting.
Oh, parking lots and lighting and. Or you give me, if I missed it, based off that, um, it can show, actually, Jay will probably know better than you, but showing where the light, where lighting fixtures are proposed, I don't know if that would show up on your plans as they are, but where, where the building lighting is, where.
Yeah, there is, the farm is, that go, that goes through the state and go again, the security.
Along with the security plan, so there's backlighting all along the buildings, uh, lights up the front of the building, but then, uh, one of the previous revisions, we had some, um, parking lot lighting, uh, along the, along the bike path, shining down onto the parking lot, so.
Yeah, put those, put those specs back in, yeah. Yeah, put those specs back in, um, if you could also just give us specs on those lights, right? We like, we encourage lighting to be down, dark sky compliant, right? Downcast, all of those good, all of those good things, so that it's not spilling onto neighboring property owners who have more impact than needs to have, but, yeah, get the lighting information back in there. So it seems like we have, any other comments around the table, or things people are thinking of? All right, so we, we have a pretty solid list of things, um, to do, to do some work on. I would tell you, I would, I would like to see this come back to this committee before it goes forward to the planning board. Um, I think that, I would like to see that largely because I, I want us to have an opportunity to have the police report information looked at by our police officer, and probably be able to make a solid recommendation to the planning board about what would be, or could be most helpful or necessary regarding circulation, if we want to see about having a detailed officer. I think some of these pieces, I'd like to see this committee see before you go on to the full planning board. So, they, we meet on the second Wednesday of each month, so we'd be looking at, likely, depends on you all and your timeline and the ability to turn this around, I know this is a time sensitive world we're all living in, period, but particularly for this use in the lottery pieces, so I imagine you all will be trying to get back for that meeting. But, I, I personally, it takes a vote of the committee, committee members, but I, I would like to see it come back with that information, so that when you move forward to the planning board, we're moving forward in a position where we are all in a spot where we, at the staff level, at the technical piece, know that being comfortable.
I think it's gonna work for you, Greg, buying out the pockets of that.
Yep, absolutely. So you'll get a summary of this meeting, um, we approve them at the next meeting, right? So this is a logistical piece, right? But, the minutes from this meeting are a very helpful tool for you all, they're a helpful tool for us all too, they're how we start the communication chain between this committee and the planning board and everyone on what matters have been discussed and what matters still need to be resolved. When the draft of this is ready, contact our, contact our office, or we'll send it to you if we remember, because if we start losing track of that on you for a draft of it, because it might actually help you all at the next meeting for us to just go through those, maybe working off the same, the same worksheet. Do you all have any other questions for us while we're here this morning? You don't, yep, you don't, you only have to apply the, to, once you're, for your development plan review, you've done your application now, right? So now we just work through getting the application to the point where it's in a spot where we're, it's gonna be okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I think it would, would be the best thing to do is to have the traffic.
And I mean, you might wanna share some of the discussions.
What is the problem?
Yeah. And we should contact you. Yeah. Reach out to us downstairs. See if we're able to get them. Okay. All right, well, thank you all. So that's the last piece I'll tell you, we're going to, so, we are gonna reach out to the chief of police and ask him to join us at this meeting next time too, so that we can just get all of the heads around the table. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a pre-application concept plan review for a major land development, Tower Hill Landings Annex, proposed construction of an eleven-unit multi-household structure and associated site improvements on assessment of flat, for Lot thirty-two, located at.
Greg.
Located at twenty ninety-four Kingstown Road, twenty ninety-five Kingstown Road, Tower Hill Landings Annex, L L C is our applicant, D C H one Realty Holding South, L L C is our property owner, good morning.
Good morning.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Great.
You guys wanna break?
No. This one isn't even a long one for us, but, yeah. All right, so if you gentlemen would just start by giving us a list of the cast of characters we have here, and then a summary of where we're at, we'll go into questions after that.
My name's Christopher Shishow, I am the owner of Tower Hill Landings, the apartment complex located over one oh eight, uh, have.
This site.
Formerly known as Heath's, uh, remember that far back. Which is now vacant, which is now vacant, and we're going to develop, to, uh, build a restaurant called Dan's Place, uh, we have the property, we have the contract, we're closing on April first, and, uh, the ultimate goal is to develop eleven, additional, all right now, to support the property, and interconnect that property to Tower Hill.
Great. All right, who else we got around the table?
Sure, I'm Russ Johnson, I'm project manager for Landings Construction Management.
I'm Steve Cabal, with Carson and Joe, and we, we also design Dan's Place.
And John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant.
All right. You guys are all here for a, a pre-app, which, for, sort of context for everybody is, there's no vesting of applications going on right now, we're just in the point of time where it's an information exchange. Traditionally, these go straight to the planning board, but you all wanted the opportunity to come to us as well, and so that is, that's great, you're gonna get feedback from us, and then you'll get feedback from the planning board, Jay, at the end of the month?
Yep.
On the project.
The board on twenty-fourth.
So great, if you wanna just give us an overview of what we're, what we're looking at doing?
Steve, you wanna go into the existing issues? Yeah, basically, you know, as we said, it's, 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 when he went in and received this permit, he went in and demoed the existing buildings, directly to residential buildings, back, and demoed the old restaurants, and not many, but, but economic, financial issues, that have to go forward. Basically, it's a one-pointed parcel, in the, of the, of the, of the, to, 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 or the rest of it, did you, you know, do a process, we did have, uh, people on the, reason for that is there's a small, uh, outside, and, 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 so, so, uh, with Dan's Place, we also had a, a new, uh, benefit of this, of this, of, 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 access. Also, it's, 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 and the way we handled this whole order for Dan's Place, and the, this way that we sit on, this one, was it's a combination of underground, and, 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 so, the same field will allow us to, 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 it wasn't an easy design, it was, it was, uh, like, we're, it's, 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 like, no waivers at all, so, as I said, we just, we just, now, because we're within the. I'm not sure it wasn't something I said.
Not yet.
No, because we're in the southeast, the local Lake District, we're allowed to bring the old, folks, I mean, the, the city, so, 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 in order to, in the department, decided the place to, 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 as we said, the, the, and, we have one building, we have another, smaller, and, 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 like, the approach is, the district, we're, we're, we're not seeking to amend this to the other projects, like, we just. Just to expand on that a little bit, we did a, this research on this, um, it could be considered an amendment to a, it's part of a, of a much larger complex, or it could be considered an amendment to a, to a, to a, uh, much more rigorous, uh, requirement, requirements, however, there are no previous, any approvals, it was never considered a building development project, uh, so. Doesn't make any sense to consider this, like, I have, I have, require, uh, open space, uh, for, um, components that are smaller, possibly, maybe would sense, so this would be considered, it's a twelve, uh, adjusted, household structure.
Still, still has its own.
Certain requirements, which, uh, 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 so, 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 basically, the, this, this project. Five, two, uh, this is, uh, and there'd be a total of eleven units, two of which would be designated as, for, 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 so. So, you know, with the last, we said, we're just gonna go back, and, and, so, uh, new things, uh, uh, information consideration. Major requirements, uh, there isn't, there isn't a lot, it's a, it's a, it's, it's, not, uh, uh, it's, 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 uh, and there's also the requirement, the commercial, uh, 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 here, between the commercial zone and the, and, there is a, there is a, at least one requirement, of, 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 yeah, yeah, so, there would need to be some consideration, position, I think that's something that, um, not really the, you know, we, 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 it's, 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 landscaping, landscaping forms, like, other components.
Then we come in when we do our landscape.
Right, we, 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 yeah, yeah. Especially, if, 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 uh, we, uh, we, uh, uh, so, yet, the, the project is in the Kingstown Road Special Management District, no farms, yes, so, so, there are no, so, 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 and there's a requirement for, 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 so, now, we have, address. We'd have to reach out, or, maybe we should have, or, we're making determinations.
Wayne Mental is our zoning enforcement officer, he's a member of this committee, but he's not present.
Yes, it's, it's. So what is it, so, so, what's the restriction?
Seventy-five hundred square feet, uh, gross leasable floor area.
Me personally, I don't wanna speak for the rest of them.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
I mean, I guess we just gotta understand that it's a, you know, there's no way for it to demonstrate hardship in sections, so, it's rather, now.
Yeah, and I think it's an interpretation thing, because I'm gonna read to you all what this section, what the wording in the section exactly says, because I, 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 I think there, it is an interpretation issue, and that is why it is largely Wayne's question, his authority to me. Um, so, what it specifically says is, within the Kingstown Road Special Management District, no structure containing any use shall exceed seven thousand five hundred square feet of gross leasable floor area. The gross leasable floor area of a shopping center shall not exceed ten thousand square feet. No single use within a shopping center, however, shall exceed seven thousand five hundred square feet. So, the thing that might make this open to interpretation, and why it's, it's very much Wayne's call to make is, his first sentence, within the Kingstown Road Special Management, no structure containing any use shall exceed seven thousand five hundred square feet. There's a question about whether or not that is a use-oriented, as far as, basically whether or not we would call the project itself a use, or whether or not it is the use of residential, including ten different residential uses. There's a piece here that I think Wayne needs to clearly weigh in on in his authority on what that exactly means, it is some.